7, 2015 Meeting of the Milton School Committee. Before we begin, please join us in a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the agenda. And just one -- oh, sorry. That was something. Just one change on the agenda. I think we're going to defer the Health and Wellness Subcommittee report until the next meeting. Any other changes, suggestions to the agenda? Without objection, the agenda is approved. Citizen speak. Mara, anybody for citizen speak? No one for citizen speak? So that is, item three on the agenda is complete. So we'll move headlong into the superintendent's report, Ms. Groomly.
Thank you, Chairman Zulus. Tonight, we have our annual MCAS presentation. And so we have talented administrators who have put a tremendous amount of work, analysis into the data, and work into this presentation. I was going to ask all of them to come to the table, but I think they have a method in their presentation. Did you want to start with science or high school, English and math? Your pleasure.
We're going to start with that. I would like to mention middle school and not high school.
Great. So I would invite up to the table Vee Vu, our data specialist, Bernadette Moonen, our elementary science coordinator, and Kristi Chapetta, our middle school science coordinator. And I would also ask up in the audience Dr. Karen Spalding to join us at the table. Also with us tonight, we have Michelle Cruiser, who you may know as the Milton High School Vice Principal. Now she's serving very ably and capably and talentedly in our K-12 math coordinator position. Barbara Wright, who is our humanities director at Milton High School, again, very talented. And to complete out that trio of talented individuals, Amy Tom, Milton High School Science Department Head. So at the table, we have Vee Vu again, our data specialist for the district through our advancement budget, I might note. Position, Bernadette Moonen, elementary science coordinator. Kristi Chapetta, middle school science coordinator. And Dr. Karen Spalding, our Pierce Middle School Principal. I just want to frame this before we begin for the viewing public, that we all knew the world of taking MCAS, grades three through eight, English and math, science, five, eight, and nine or 10, English to graduate at grade 10, and math to graduate at grade 10. We've all seen the press about the new PACC exam. And we, as a team, worked over the last two years, they worked harder than I did, along with our teachers and students. And last year, Milton Public Schools students took the PACC exam on computers, grades three through eight, in English and math. The DESI has, there's no PACC exam for science, so at grades five, eight, and nine, we chose biology. The science remained MCAS. And to graduate from high school, out till 2018 and 19, they're still 18?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. We're still using MCAS at grades 10 in English and math. And so all the school districts across the state are at different stage of implementation. Some took PACC by pencil, some took PACC via computer. And you know that the Board of Education is voting on a full PACC implementation, which we will address at a different meeting. But we're pleased to present to you tonight our students' MCAS results. And parents who are viewing and guardians should know that tomorrow, these results will be mailed to individual parents of students in grades, again, five, eight, and nine, science, and some 10, and math and English. Parents and guardians of students who were in grade 10 last year. And again, these scores are from last year. So welcome, and we appreciate the work that you've put in. You should also know, and I'll turn this over, these administrators have worked with our teachers, shared these results with our teachers and staff, continue to share and analyze the data. And I welcome them and tell them how appreciative we are of their talented expertise in this presentation tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that introduction. And without further ado, I'd just like to jump straight into the presentation. The superintendent actually went through a lot of the background notes, so I'm just going to skip this slide. This slide is basically just a reminder that the low income and economically disadvantaged are two measures that are not directly comparable. So this year, the state started using the new metric, economically disadvantaged. And that group of students is actually a smaller subset of the low income, and they're our neediest students. So when we're looking at some of the subgroup data later, just keep that in mind, that it's not directly comparable, but we're just putting it there for your reference going For accountability purposes, the state has deemed that, you know, the performance of all MCAS alternate testings are included in the warning and failing category. So that's not a determination that we make at the district level. That's, you know, what the state has deemed for accountability purposes.
Vee, I promise not to interrupt you, but would you explain what the MCAS alternative is?
So the MCAS alternative assessments are for those students who are not able to sit for the regular MCAS exam. So, you know, due to extreme accommodations that students have to take, you know, some students have to take longer time, some students need other kind of accommodations to complete the MCAS. So the MCAS alternate assessment is actually a portfolio process that allow students to test specific standards. Unfortunately, you know, the whole MCAS alternate assessments process and portfolios are not counted under accountability purposes. So for individual students, their achievement level are still reported home to their families. So they might be emerging, progressing, making a lot of progress, and that's still great for the individual students. But at the school level and at the district level, when we're looking at accountability data, the state loops it all in with the warning and failing. So how did Milton perform on the MCAS this year? Looking at this chart, you can see the blue represent the percentage of advanced students, the green represent the proficient students, yellow needs improvement, and red is warning and failing. And the first bar, I don't know if you can really see it, but the first bar is the bar of the state performance. And then next to it is our district performance, and then our individual schools. So what's the difference about district and the individual school? Is the district numbers also include any outplacement students at other schools that the district is still deemed responsible for. What you can see from these bars is, you know, Milton is doing better than the state. But I don't think that's news to any of us here. So same thing with high school science. So the first two sets of bars are for the ninth grade bio. The next set is for 10th grade, science, technology, and engineering. So the 10th grade STE is a little misleading. This is the state reporting the bio test that the ninth grader take two years later.
Hmm.
So that's why we have both ninth grade bio. The bio results are what our current 10th grader took immediately last year when they were ninth grader. The 10th grade STE are what our current 10th grader take two years ago. So you have to keep that straight when you're looking at this data. It's a little confusing. The next set of bars we have are the 10th grade ELA results. Bars are really high. And then the last set of bars are the math results. So again, we're higher than the state. So how do we really judge the overall performance of our district? How do we know that we're making gains on proficiency? So the state has provided us with a framework that is called the Composite Performance Index. And it is basically a measure of the extent to which students are progressing towards proficiency. So my first bullet point here, just kind of give you the calculation for how the state comes up with a CPI for a group of student, for a school, or for our district. And a CPI of 100 means that all of our students are proficient or higher. So the goal standard is really to get the CPI for any group of student to be 100. And so CPI measure the aggregate performance. So it takes into the account the performance of those students who are proficient and higher, but also those who are needs improvements, who are warning, because even within those categories, students are making improvement. They're making, they're increasing their performance. And the CPI allows us to capture everything in one number, one indicator. So this is the chart of how Milton performed on the selected science MCAS, the grade 10 MCAS, the grade 10 ELA and math MCAS over the past four years using the CPI index. So the first three lines that you see are the high school, ELA, math, and STE. And when you're looking at a graph over time, obviously, you're just looking really for the overall trend line. What you want to see is generally that the trend line is going upward, because there will be fluctuation in the data over time. So you're really just looking for a general trend here. The next few set of lines, the green, red, purple, and blue, those are the elementary CPI lines, trend line, over the past four years. And you can see between 2014 and 2015, most of our tested subjects here have gone up in performance. And then you see the yellow line is for peers. And peers between 2013 and 2015, you see that incredible jump in performance. That's really a testament to the work at the school. So I pull out a lot of these highlights already as I was talking through the data. But, so across the board, you know, our schools are outperforming the state on the MCAS. The high school has consistently maintained a very high level of performance. And when you're performing at a high level, you're not going to see an upward trend line all the time, because you're already at 95 and above with a CPI, you know? So it's going to fluctuate a little bit, but it's not going to change all that much. You see at the elementary and middle school, since last year, the trend line is going up. And that's really great news for all of us who have invested so much in science over the past two years. This slide is in response to some members here at the school committee wanting to really compare our performance, not against the state, but against other high-performing peer communities. So we pick out 10 communities here that Milton considers its high-performing peers, just to give you a taste of other districts and their CPI at the various grade levels that we have. And I don't know if you can really see, but the top part gives you the CPI, and the bottom part gives you the demographic profile of the district. And I think it's important that when you look at performance of a particular district, or if we want to compare ourselves to another district, we have to take into account the demographic profile of those districts as well, to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. So, you know, here Burlington, Canton, and Wellesley actually are most demographically similar to us here at Milton. You see the percentage of the population on the bottom. And then when you look at the CPI of those three communities that I just mentioned, you see that Milton is really on par in terms of performance with all these peer communities. And then if you are looking at other communities, so let's look at Hingham, which I think has the highest performance out of all the communities listed here. So it's the middle, the middle bar, the middle chart. It has grade five science, the CPI is almost 95. Grade eight science, the CPI is 89. Grade 10, science, ELA, and math is all above 95. And you look at the demographic profile, it's different from where we are. We have more diversity here in Milton Public School, and that has to be taken into consideration. We have more students with high needs here in Milton, and that has to be taken into So that's for you to kind of take a closer look at. And then I want to talk a little bit about the achievement gap. I think it took me a little bit to understand that there are really two different goals that we're talking about here. One is the proficiency gap that I was talking about earlier, using the CPI. We really want to push our CPI as close to 100 as possible, because that means that all our students are performing at proficient or above. So that's one district goal. The other district goal is really the drive to close the achievement gap between different subgroups. And I just have some, a chart right here, just to illustrate what I mean by the achievement gap. So if we take these three different subgroup, economically disadvantaged, so for example, their CPI is 70, and then non-economically disadvantaged group, the overall CPI is 90. The achievement gap between these two, the economically disadvantaged subgroup and the counterpart would be 20 points. Just take 90, subtract 70, and that's 20 points. So that's pretty standard. I think when you consider the rate of change, that's when things become a little more interesting. So for example, this same economically disadvantaged group, if this year, it was able to increase its CPI to 80 by moving a lot of students in warning to needs improvement, but its counterpart group, the non-economically disadvantaged, also moved its CPI from 90 to 100. They're both moving, they're both making progress and improvement. However, if you're subtracting 100 from 80, the CPI gap is still 20. So you see the gap as not changing, even though we have improvement in performance for our student. So I just want you to keep that in mind, because we're looking at two different goals here. And for, you know, achievement gap, students actually, subgroup students actually have to make more progress than their counterpart for the gap to close. So let's look at the achievement gaps among subgroups for Milton. This slide is looking at the subgroup, at the subgroup achievement gap for fifth grade, so elementary science. And each color line represent a different subgroup. And then you can kind of see the tracking up their gaps between the past four years. So what you want to see is the gap line actually trending down, so opposite of what we want the performance line to look like. The gap line, you want it to trend downward to as close as zero as possible, because that would mean that there's no gap between the subgroup and the counterpart. So here, you see that the trend line is dipping until 2014, and then the gap kind of opens up again in 2015. So this is the CPI gap at Pierce. And you see the trend lines are kind of staying the same in that 20 to 30 percent points This is what the CPI gap looks like for 10th grade science. So again, it has that trend where it was dipping up until 2014, then in 2015, it opens up again, the gap widens again. This is grade 10 math. Kind of see the same pattern as the previous graph. And then this one is the only one. This one is the graph of 10th grade ELA, where you kind of see the CPI gap. Not only does it kind of stay stable, kind of stay flat, but it's at less than 10, 10 points difference. So that means that, you know, the subgroups and their counterparts are doing very similar in terms of performance. There's not much of a gap between them. Well, I think I cover all this point already. I'm going to skip this. So the conclusion is, you know, taking together for the past two years, I think the investment in STEM is helping to close the proficiency gap. So that means that all students at large in the district are making improvement on their science performance. So that means that you saw that trend line from 2014, 2015, swinging up for most of our schools. However, our subgroup data is getting actually farther apart. And this is something that, you know, we're seeking to understand more. But before drawing any final conclusion about the performance of subgroups, we really need to see the ELA and math data from the state. And unfortunately, we won't get that back until mid-December, sometime in December for the district. And then the public release of the PACC data is not until mid-December. This is what I said. And for the PACC data, you know, the state has released preliminary statewide PACC data that shows that ELA and math performance on the PACC is lower than performance on the MCAS. And the commissioner has cautioned us not to read too much into this data right now, because they're still calibrating the PACC, and they really need to look at the performance of all the states, and not only the states, but also nationally, the PACC consortium, to make sure that they're deciding on the right cut scores and all of that for us. So there's still, you know, a lot of work to be done. I think people are excited about what's happening, and people are anticipating this as much as we are. So we're going to wait until December to see how it all turns out. So now I'm going to turn the podium over to my esteemed colleagues here, who's going to give you more detailed performance at the school level, and talk a little bit more about the subgroup data, as well as the next steps for what the district is going to do.
Good evening, everybody. I'm excited to be here tonight to share with you some of the successes. I'm just going to pull this out, if you don't mind. Some of the successes that we see in our elementary science data, as well as some of the areas that we do know we need to focus our resources and support on. So this slide is an overall view of how the district as a whole did at the grade five level for the science, technology, and engineering MCAS. This, I'm not sure if we saw graphs that looked similar to this, but just to keep in mind going forward, the graphs, the visual representations will look like this. And the purple line will represent advanced and proficient, the blue line being advanced, green proficient, yellow needs improvement, and red warning and failing. So this is a good news slide, in that we are seeing an increased percentage of students overall scoring advanced or proficient on the grade five MCAS, and also a decreased percentage of students scoring needs improvement. So it is good news overall. I can tell you that we can gain so much valuable information from digging really deep into this data, and we have been doing that. But that also, when you're in the school buildings and you hear the students talking about what they're doing in science class, and the teachers having rich conversations about how a lesson went, or what they're going to do different next time, it really is an indication of where we have come from. So we've made big improvements in science at the elementary level. To take a quick peek at each school's individual achievement. At the Collicott School, we see that there is an increase in the percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced by 10%, which is something that we all are very proud of. I can tell you that a team of teachers at the Collicott created their student learning goals and professional practice goals around science, and specifically writing in science. And all of their hard work really is paying off. At the Cunningham School, again, we are encouraged by the data. We see an increased percentage of students scoring advanced and proficient. We definitely know we still have room to grow, and this goes, I guess, for all of the schools and the district as a whole at the elementary level, in that we have made science a priority over the past few years. And with that, we were able to purchase a new science curriculum with the advancement budget. And it is now in its second year of implementation. So last year, the teachers implemented two new units each, and they worked tirelessly to understand the curriculum, learn how to best use it with their students, and the students learned how to best interact with these brand-new materials. And we hope to see more students coming out of that needs improvement and warning category, and into the advanced and proficient category, of course. And as teachers learn and become more comfortable with the curriculum materials and gain more professional development, we hope to see that going forward. Here we have the Glover School. And you can see that unlike the other two schools I just spoke about, we don't see the same trend. We don't see the percentage of students in advanced and proficient increasing. In fact, over the past two years, we do see a dip in the percentage of students scoring advanced and proficient. I will tell you, this is something that we had our eyes on last year, and now we are certainly paying very close attention to this situation. The Glover School has the same resources and professional development and support as the other schools did. The good news out of this is that there are rich conversations happening even more amongst teachers, and myself, and principals, and other curriculum specialists, thinking about what we can do better, and how we can best address the needs of these students, and stop this trend. So good work will come out of this, and the conversations are continuing, and the work is changing and improving. So we're looking forward to the future. Here we have the Tucker Schools data, and their percentage of students scoring advanced and proficient did increase by 14%. We're really proud of this, we're proud of the district as a whole at the elementary level, but this is something to be proud of. And it speaks to the work the students are doing, and that the teachers are doing. And also, at the Tucker School last year, they were really focused on writing across content areas, and that shows in the data, so we're proud of that. This slide shows our subgroup data, which is another area that absolutely sparked some rich conversations and thoughts around what we can do differently and better going forward. We did see our percentage of students scoring advanced and proficient decrease in each of our subgroups since last year. So it's something that we are certainly keeping a close eye on, making strategic changes to what we are doing, and thinking thoughtfully, and planning together with curriculum coordinators, and principals, and teachers, to see how we can best meet the needs of all of our students, regardless of their needs or demographics. It pulls It pulls me almost like I want to go into my next slide, which is our next steps, because we really do need to hone in on who these students are and what exactly they need, and think about the ways in which we can provide supports for them to achieve at a high level. So I'm going to go right into my next steps. Last year, at the elementary level, we did beyond-the-bell programming for ELA and for math for identified students. We did not include science in those courses. So this year, I have been working with principals and with Superintendent Gormley and Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and other curriculum coordinators to include science in those beyond-the-bell programming so that we can invite identified students who may be struggling or need extra support or to be backfilled with information they might not have come into school with so that they too can perform at a high level. With that being said, we need to have a tool from which to identify these students, which is also something we have not had in the past. We have not had common assessments in science before, and this year is our first year where we have had common assessments in grades three, four, and five in the form of a pre-test and a post-test, so we can see growth, we can see the knowledge that students have or do not have coming into a unit, and really adjust the amount of time that we're spending on certain topics depending on that pre-test data. So teachers are going to be able to differentiate more having that pre-test data and knowing what their students know, whereas in the past, we haven't had that kind of information. We haven't had a tool that would tell us that. So rather than just giving information to the students and hoping that they get it, we really can target our instruction going forward based on individual needs and providing beyond-the-bell programming. So that's something that we are excited about and will continue to revise and change as needed as the years go on. In addition to that, we will continue the implementation of curricular units in grades three and five. You might remember that fourth grade already had a FOS unit called Landforms in place, so we did not replace that. But grades three and five will implement one new FOS science unit this year and receive professional development around that. And in addition, through the advancement budget, we were able to receive funding for a second grade, three second-grade FOS units. So those second-grade teachers will be receiving professional development and support and curriculum materials in science, and we also will be having more professional development around writing in science, differentiation in science. Our December 2nd half-day professional development session is dedicated to science alone at the elementary level, so we really are excited to continue the work that we've already begun. We also are continuing to grow the STEM program in our English Innovation Pathway. It's growing into grade four with the Project Lead the Way program. We're continuing our work with science from scientists in every grade-five classroom district-wide, and we are continuing to work with, well, I'm continuing to work with Kristi and Amy to vertically align what we are doing and ensure that the activities that our students are having in elementary school really are growing and expanding as they get into the middle and high school. In addition to that, in the conversations that I've been having based on the data with teachers and with curriculum coordinators and principals, we are talking and having conversations about when students are receiving their special education services and in trying to ensure that it doesn't happen only in one subject area, or finding ways that we can support students in science in the classroom. So those are some of the ways that we are going to adjust what we're doing going forward at the elementary level. Now I'll pass it over to Kristi.
I have the privilege this evening of sharing with you our MCAS data for Pierce. We were anxiously awaiting this data. We've been digging pretty deeply into it, coming up, I think, with often more questions than we started with. But as we look at this slide here, there are some good news stories to share. First, in the advanced and proficient category, we increased the percentage of students following that category by 6%, which is very exciting, and it continues the upward trend that started in 2013. So we're moving in the right direction. And while we don't make it our goal to compare ourselves to the state, I think it is important to note that over these last three years, the state has remained flat while we have continued to grow. So that does tell us that something about our implementation is having an impact overall. Another highlight is the significant decrease in the percent of students in the warning and failing category. So we cut it more than half, decreasing from 14 to 6%, which is very exciting.
The other point I want to highlight also just is that our, one of our primary goals is really increasing this advanced and proficient category overall. We're still working pretty aggressively towards trying to get that to a higher number. We're headed in the right direction, but a significant goal is actually moving that number. When we look at our subgroup data, much like at the other levels, we acknowledge we have a lot of room to grow here, and we are very focused on our subgroups, but it is, I guess, exciting to see that the trends that we saw in the overall data do continue here, and that when it comes to the warning and category, again, we see a significant decrease for those students. So that is a highlight in the subgroup data. I have a lot of next steps to share with you. We've been doing a lot of exciting things at the Pierce. Some of this is things that we started last year as part of the advancement budget and our work within the Science Department that we are continuing this year, and then we have some exciting new initiatives as well. So when I look at this year's data, we are in our second full year of implementation of the new science curriculum purchased through the advancement budget. In some ways, this is baseline data for us. These students in 2015 really only experienced the new curriculum in eighth grade. So over the next two years, students will be having more and more of that new curriculum, and their teachers will be more experienced teaching that curriculum. So I would expect and hope that we'll continue to see this trend grow over time because our students have had more exposure to the curriculum. Another highlight from the Pierce is that over the 2014-2015 school year, all of the teachers in the Science Department worked together around common goals, common evaluation goals on decreasing the achievement gap for our African-American students. So as a department, over the course of the year during our team meetings and our data analysis time, we really focused on those students and looking at their, analyzing their data on our internal assessments and really monitoring the gap and coming up with strategies to implement and try to track the progress of those strategies. We're going to continue that work this year, and I believe that those strategies had a positive impact on all subgroups, not just our African-American subgroup. We chose that subgroup because it was the largest subgroup in the Pierce, and we are hoping that by targeting that particular group, we're actually able to have an impact on the other subgroups as well, because there is significant overlap, and a lot of those same strategies are just generally effective for all students. So moving forward, we will continue with that work and try to build on our process within the department for that. The next two things I want to share with you are exciting highlights to our STEM program. This year, we are offering a new elective in the sixth grade, sort of an introductory STEM course for students focusing on design and engineering, in part because in addition to assessing life science, earth science, and physical science, the MCAS also assesses students on standards around technology and engineering. And while our science teachers are doing their best to address them, we felt like it was really important for students to get more exposure and to build on the STEM experience that kids are now having at the elementary level. So thanks to the MFE, we've been able to purchase some new materials with the celebration money and the Jeep raffle that will support these courses. So we have a new sixth-grade course that is serving 230 students this year, and we've added sections to our seventh and eighth-grade STEM electives to try to offer more seats to a wider group of students. And so overall, the goal for these courses is not only to target technology and engineering standards, but to really extend the science experiences as well. So the curriculum that we're purchasing often has, for example, we have some stuff around forces in motion. They're doing a lot of the design and engineering process, but they're also building on the eighth-grade physics unit that they're experiencing in their science class as well. Our hope with these courses is that not only will we engage more students in science and engineering, but that we're also going to move kids into that proficient and advanced bucket in the, on their MCAS results. Along the STEM lines, Dr. Swalding and I have another exciting piece of news to share. We found out today that the Pierce has received the second year of the Creativity and Innovation Grant from the state, which is about $14,000, that we will use to support a STEM science connection that we already have going around robotics and some other technology work that we're doing. And it's going to allow our students to, again, visit the Krista McAuliffe Center at Framingham State and have a really great hands-on experience that focuses on the career, STEM career-to-college pathway. So another next step for this year, unlike math and ELA, science, the science MCAS covers three years of content. Last year, as a department, particularly the eighth-grade teachers, we decided that we would have a more concentrated review prior to MCAS, helping students revisit concepts that they maybe saw in sixth and seventh grade for two reasons. One is that it's a long time since sixth grade, but the other is thinking about some of our students who are very different in eighth grade than they were as sixth-grade learners. So sometimes they just needed to see the content again, and they had a new opportunity to learn it, and they really strengthened their understanding. So this year, again, we've already started to think about how we can review even better and starting sooner in the year. So for example, last week, I was in an eighth-grade classroom. They're doing a weather unit, and the teacher was spending the first 20 minutes doing a review of the seasons. That is a seventh-grade unit, but just sort of reviewing these concepts with kids, and they're working on Friday during our PD day. They have some time set aside where they're going to work together to really highlight the concepts by looking at the data, to see where we need to focus, but also figuring out how those other content, how those other grade-level teachers can support them. So that's another step that we're taking this year. In addition, again, thanks to the MFE, we have another tool in our toolkit to help engage our students in science. We started using the STAR Lab today with students at the Pierce. It's inflated and in the library, and teachers are popping in excitedly plotting how they're going to use it to support their curriculum. It was actually used by our reading specialist today with her students who are reading a book that focuses on astronomy, so the kids were in there looking at stars and getting a better understanding of constellations before they started digging into their new novel. But the science teachers are also thinking about how they can use it to review with students. So the eighth-grade teachers are excited to bring it in, to bring students in because they can look at concepts in a way that they haven't seen now in this 3D model format, and it'll be a new way for our eighth graders. So it should be a very exciting year at the Pierce. And again, we're continuing the curriculum alignment between K through 12, especially around the STEM. So we're working right now, just trying to think about how we can have our STEM program build upon all the work that's already happening, but yet be a good starting point for students who weren't in that STEM pathway. So we're coming up with new, new engineering and design experiences that are slightly different, but will still be engaging to all students as they enter.
We'll transition to our high school college.
Good evening. So I wanted to look at the ELA scores for the 10th grade, and if you look at this chart, you'll see that top line is, represents the students that scored advanced and proficient combined, and then you see the next two lines. The blue line is the advanced scores, and the green line is the proficient scores, and that's actually the graph you'd like to see. You'd like to see, as the proficient goes down, it's because the advanced are going up. So I'm excited to say that we have a 10% increase for our grade 10 ELA for students going from proficient into the advanced category. So we're very excited about that at the high school level. Our needs improvement and warning and failing have remained about the same, and our scores have remained about the same overall, but it's really nice to see the increase in students going into the advanced bucket. On this chart, it breaks down the subgroups, and it's hard to look at the, that first subgroup just because of the differences in pairings for this year with the way that they have categorized it. But if you look at the third group over, this is the group I'm very excited about, if African-American students, you can see there is a 10% increase of students from, again, proficient to advanced. And so when you think back to that prior slide and you see an increase in our students going up to the advanced level, it is one of the subgroups that we are trying to target, the African-American students, and so you see that 10% increase in that group, so we're very excited about that. Obviously, we want to continue and have more and more students each year go from proficient to advanced, but we think that it's a nice trend right now for the ELA grade 10.
For the math scores, our scores have remained relatively stable over the last few years. There's a very slight decrease for this cohort from this last school year and a slight increase in the number of warning and failing students. But, you know, the hope is that we don't dip down any further going into this school year. We are still very, with a high number of students in advanced and proficient, and we actually, if you look at the advanced category in the blue, we still have 71% scoring advanced, which is quite high. If we look at the subgroup data, you know, we have some areas that we are working on in the students with disabilities. We did have an increase in the number of failures. We are addressing this need by including more co-taught classes. This school year, we're up to four co-taught classes. And if you look at the African-American and black subgroup, one area that we're working on is trying to increase the number, like ELA, of students who are in the proficient category to the advanced category. So that's one, we want to move them from the proficient bucket into the advanced bucket, and also decrease the number of warning and failing students in that area. You know, for the African-American, black subgroup and these other, the other at-risk groups that we have, we do target these students by having programs such as the Calculus Project, and those kids are up in the high school now, and we have some in the middle school and some at the high school. And we also have MCAS math support classes during the school day to try to move those students forward.
So with science at the high school, I'm going to talk about two different pieces of data for tonight that V started to discuss earlier, and it can be a little bit confusing. So a few years ago, by the state, they wanted to streamline the science data at the high school level, so it was reported out in the same cohort year as math and ELA. So grade 10 STE data hasn't been around for any more than about five years at this point. And as to what V was saying earlier, when we're looking at grade 10 STE data that is reported out by the state in the current year, these are actually our current juniors at the high school. So these students sat for the test two springs ago in their ninth-grade class when they took biology for the majority of our students. One of the reasons that we do continue to offer the grade nine biology MCAS exam is that's the first science course for the majority of our students entering into the high school, and it also gives us two years to work with students before this data is reported out so that if they do need additional support or extra help, we have that additional year to give it to them before the grades do become released at the state level. So if we look at the grade 10 STE MCAS data, we do see fluctuations throughout the years. A couple other things that we want to highlight is when we look at grade 10 STE data, there are multiple tests that students can take across the state. So again, here at Milton, we focus on the biology MCAS exam, but unfortunately, this data is not true just to biology. Depending if we have students transfer in from another school during their grade 10 year, they may sit and take the physics exam or the chemistry exam depending on what course they were taking at their school prior to Milton High. So that can also impact the data here as well, that we have to remember it's an entirely different test and set of standards, but as it's the science, technology, engineering group, they're all kind of correlated together. So this data we actually saw last year as last year's grade nine biology data, and we knew that we did have a little dip in the scores, especially in that advanced range where we hope to see more of our students achieving. So the first thing that we noticed from this data was that with our students with disabilities, we needed to find more initiatives to help move them up to the proficient and advanced ratings that we would like to see them achieve as. One thing that happened during this cohort's year of testing is there was no MCAS prep class during the school day offered for students. Unfortunately, due to scheduling, we were only able to offer support classes either with review sessions before or after school, so the first thing we knew is we had to reinstate that for the next cohort year, which we did. And we also started to increase our co-taught classes in the biology classroom from one to two sections. to two sections. And we'll look and see how that data compares once those initiatives were put back in place because that actually has an impact on our Grade 9 data. So, these students are currently in the 10th grade. They took this exam in the spring of 2015, so this past June. And again, this data gives us an indication of what will be reported out at the state level next year for our Grade 10 STE results. But again, there are some students that will enter Grade 10 this year, transfer in, and their scores may fluctuate what we see up on the screen here. We have seen an excellent growth in the students' scoring at the advanced level, so that's a great news story. And with our initiatives and our subgroup data, we see that the students with disabilities performing at the proficient or higher rate has also increased. So, those initiatives of increasing the number of science co-taughts for the biology classes and the reintroduction of MCAS prep during the school day has helped these students in their achievement levels. Similar to math, one area that we're going to continue to look at and one of the initiatives that we're going to continue our support efforts with and also really ensuring that our students are taking advantage of them is with the African-American, black subgroup. And that's what we'll be also focusing on with our continued co-taught efforts this So, collectively across the high school, what we're doing as our next steps, a lot of these have already been pointed out, but the co-taught classes across English, math, and science are still a big initiative of ours. And with this, we've actually been able to receive an additional special education teacher this year. Not only does that help us expand our co-taught offerings, but it also helps with allowing more academic support classes during the school day for our students with disabilities. We've increased co-taught classes in math. We've moved from three sections to four sections this year. And we're continuing to offer our freshman seminar for students who are specifically identified to us from teachers of Grade 8 down at the Pierce, just giving them additional resources their first semester here up at Milton High School. We've also added a reading specialist at the high school level who is not only focusing on just the English aspects of reading, but also how it can transfer over to math skills and science skills. Again, helping with these initiatives based on the data, what we would like to try to see to move more of our students up in terms of their ratings on the MCAS exams. Two summer projects that we have, the Calculus Project and the Bridge Program, they both run over the summer and they also continue initiatives throughout the school year. As Michelle said, some of the students in the Calculus Project are currently here at the high school, and there are also some students at the middle school who will continue to move up. The Bridge Program is solely for Grade 8 students moving into ninth grade, so they're here at the high school for the first year this year. And not only did they meet over the summer, but they continue to meet after school or during the day during advisory sessions at least twice a week during the school day. The one thing that we would like to mention about these two programs is that they are contingent upon funding in terms of moving forward, but these are initiatives that we do hope to keep running for future cohorts for the high school. And the last piece is a little bit more about science as the advancement budget is coming to the high school for the first time this year. And we've already started planning our professional development sessions and curriculum models that we would like to work through to not only bring STEM and engineering more forefront into our current curriculum, but also my work with Kristi and Bernadette, seeing all the work and initiatives that they have put forward. What we need to start doing at the high school to best prepare for our students moving up with all these enhancement and science skills that they're going to have coming from the other grades. So, the first part is actually going to take place tomorrow. The entire science department staff is going to be partaking in STEM and engineering professional development at PTC in Needham, which is very exciting. And then, we're going to take all of that work and see how we can begin to develop courses and electives to offer our students at the high school level in engineering, competitive robotics, and hopefully reaching up to astronomy. Which brings us to the last point. I was able to visit the Pierce today and myself and the three physics teachers at the high school. We went and explored the STAR Lab, and we're already talking about PD that they are looking forward to, to figure out how we can first get this into the physics classes as early as this year, and then how this can actually transform into future STEM electives focusing on that engineering component that Kristi was talking about in future years to come.
If I was able to get in, grab the STAR Lab at Pierce today.
Wow. I want to go.
That looks awesome.
It's actually kind of hard to take pictures when students are in the STAR Lab.
Because it's very dark in there. But this is the best that we could do for today.
Beautiful.
I think that's it from us, unless you have any questions.
I think we're just waiting for the lights to come on.
Right. Did you want the other people to come up with the chairs in case anyone had any questions?
Sure, yeah. If the rest of you want to come up just in case there are questions for the elementary. Thank you very much for a very extensive presentation. And now that we have the lights, we can open it up for questions. And I think I saw Ms. Verella first, so is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, well, there's a lot here. There's a lot here, but the first one, can you hear me? Sorry. The first one, I guess, that I'm going to query about, and then I'm sure my colleagues may note of it as well, but I mean, I think the biggest query we have is the fact that the advancement money for the area of kids who need to progress the most, unfortunately, you know, well, overall, everything looks very good, but unfortunately, that doesn't. So, I guess the question is, what's your feeling on that? Do you think it's just, you just need to keep at it more? Or, I mean, I know the other things that, you know, you meant, you know, do you think that the other things that you pointed out for next steps, action steps, will hopefully continue that? So, I think that's the first big question.
I do think that the next steps will certainly contribute to a change in that data. Again, not having a tool to identify students who may be struggling or may be entering into a need of study without the same background knowledge as their peers, without a tool to show us that, how can we address their needs? So, having something in place this year and continuing to adapt that tool going forward is certainly, I think, a big first step. And the teachers so appreciate having it. The conversations that I've been having with teachers and the teachers have been having with each other around the pre-test data really is amazing. And it's conversations that haven't been taking place at the elementary level all too much or at least not grounded in data, just things that we've observed or things that we think or assume. So, to have a tool that really shows us that and something to ground conversations in does make a big difference and can help teachers plan better for the needs of their individual students. So, I do think that that will help. I think that the advancement beyond the bell initiatives last year not including science, I wish that we did include it, and going forward, we certainly will. I'm also taking note of what Kristi and Amy are saying in that, you know, the elementary schedule doesn't really allow for an MCAS review course, but there are certainly things that we can do beyond the bell for struggling learners or for students who are coming in without the same background knowledge that are really targeted around specific standards that they are showing us through their work and through their assessments that they really need. And luckily, we actually, we've kept all of our materials from previous units that used to be used at the elementary level that are now replaced with FOS units. So, we have a lot of good materials that can be pieced together to make a really great review kit or some sort of unit that can be used beyond the bell for those students. So, I do think those are really good steps that we are taking going forward, and we're excited to see what happens with them.
And if I might add, so, when you look at if, historically in the Milton Public Schools, we put new curriculum in one year at a time. So, I think it's important to say with the advancement initiative, we were able to purchase all of the entire science curriculum for the Pierce School, implementing it over two years, and at the elementary, implementing it over two years. Without that purchase of materials from the advancement, again, having three curriculum leaders inspecting what's happening, working with the teachers, doing the extended day, you wouldn't have seen eight, 10, and 14 percentage points in advanced and proficient. So, for me, that proves that all of the pieces are in place. With the extended day, to Bernadette's point, we did math and language arts. In math and language arts, you have math and language arts the percentage of every day. So, we were talking that at the elementary, we didn't do any of the extended day in science. And it's a matter of experience, it's a matter of, I was with a Milton Public School father at a meeting the other day, and he said he had his seven- and four-year-old at the science museum. Again, those are experiences. So, we've started to brainstorm on after-school, the Saturday, the before-school, integrating that science and targeting those subgroups. What we know from the advance, the increase in proficient and advanced, the pieces are in place. The curriculum, the teachers knowing the curriculum, at the elementary, you have only implemented what percentage of the curriculum?
Right. I should have mentioned that earlier. I'm so happy that you brought it up, and Kristi did touch upon it earlier. So, the advancement budget allowed for us to purchase new curricular materials, but the fifth graders who took this science MCAS last year, they had two new units out of eight that were purchased. You know, they only had two, and it was the teacher's first year of implementation, and I will tell you, they worked tirelessly to learn that and to teach it to the best of their ability, and they did a fantastic job. But we won't see the full effect of these students having all of these new units from second grade all the way up until fifth grade for a few years because even this group of fifth graders now, they all have all three new units in fifth grade. They will have had two new units in fourth grade, but they will have had no new units in second grade or third. And then the next year, it's kind of building upon what happened in the previous year. So, while we are seeing gains, we hope to continue to see these gains going forward the more teachers get comfortable and familiar with the content and the materials and the curriculum and the more exposure students have had to it. So, we're looking forward to the future.
In a closing on that, Mr. Walker had asked something about vertical articulation at a prior presentation. So, you can see these three coordinators learning from one another, you know, when they get to the middle school, that in their evaluation tool for the first time last year, Ms. Verella, that actually, science teachers at one grade level, their goal was raising the science scores of the African-American, black population. Again, identifying the subgroup that they were going to target. And I think the most powerful thing that I've heard this whole school year is when Kristi Chipetta said, when you target and look at that group, the impact on the other subgroups, when you come up with skills to reinforce at the high school, the co-taught, the MCAS support, all of the subgroups are going to matter. If you didn't see the enhancements and the achievement over the whole district, those would be areas of concern. But to reduce at the middle school, the number and half of students failing and to increase proficient and advanced that you're moving the entire district, but that targeted instruction is what's essential for the subgroups.
I'd also just like to add quickly, to add on to what you just said, when we presented this data to the staff and when I sat down with teachers to talk about their specific schools' data, we also looked at middle school data and we also looked at high school data. And I shared with them what Kristi, the work Kristi had done with this group of teachers at the middle school around engagement strategies for a subgroup. And they were so interested in it. And I will tell you right now, there are a handful of teachers that are begging, you know, that they're just begging for that kind of work. They want to do that kind of work. And the fact that we have a team like Amy, Kristi, and myself who know each other really well and know we're only a phone call away or a drive down the street to share ideas and things that worked or didn't work quite so well, or just to learn about the STAR Lab, it really, it makes a really huge difference. So, that's just something I wanted to add.
Can I have a quick follow-up too? The other question I wanted to ask you all being here, even I know Mary, you all and Mary referenced the park as well. And I noticed that even with regards to science, that, you know, of course, as the kids get older, the scores are really kind of off the charts and even children with special needs, I mean, everyone's progressing. Do you think that, you know, they just get better at taking the MCAS because they've been taking it so long and they understand the test and, I don't know, are less stressed about it? I just would like your concept on that because just in my own household, talking about park, you know, they like MCAS better because, and I really think it's because they're just used to taking it, and they're less stressed about it. So, I just want your feedback on that, looking at the numbers and how the high school is, you know, like, English and math is like off the charts.
I can't speak too much to the English and math, but I think one thing in science that's important to know is that for the Grade 5 MCAS and the Grade 8 MCAS, the students have standards that they need to become proficient in across chemistry, biology, and physics, along with technology and engineering. And at the high school level, it's a focus just on one content area. Again, for the majority of our students, just in biology. So, I think, you know, as they get older and the maturity piece to it as well, they only have to focus on this one area, and it's kind of like a complex system almost, where the whole year's worth, it builds upon itself. And even if it's in January or March, they can see those connections being made because, again, it's really all central around that one big idea, which is a big difference when compared to all the different standards that you would look at across three years, grades three, four, and five for the Grade 5 MCAS, and then six, seven, and eight for the Grade 8 MCAS. And I don't know if you want to add anything?
And just to add to that, I think that, you know, when you look at the ELA scores, when you think about it, our students in kindergarten practice reading and writing. At grade 12, it's still reading and writing. And so, we really have a little bit of an advantage in that we don't need to cover physics one year and chemistry another year and biology another year. We get to build on, and it becomes more sophisticated and complicated, obviously, but it's really the same thing 12 years. So, we get to get credit for the work that our kindergarten teachers are doing.
Ms. Bagby-Jones.
I think too, that in the fifth grade, it's the first time, well, in the past, it has been the first time for some of our students to ever have a test, unfortunately, in science. And that will be changing now that we have common assessments and this will...